The Board of Education will come to order. Is there a motion to enter into executive session?
I move to enter into executive session to discuss personnel, collective bargaining, legal, property acquisition issues, and student issues. Maryland Local Government Code Article Section 9-512, A1, 2, 6, and 10.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Everyone in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? The Board will now enter into executive session. The ayes have it. The Board of Education will reconvene at this time. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Aye. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sorry we're a few minutes late. Just got back from having a quick dinner at McDonald's. Please turn off your cellphones if you haven't done so already. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Anyone in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? The ayes have it. Board reports. Mr. Matthews.
Yes, sir, Dr. Raspe. I have just been working real hard. I don't have any report. I've just been trying to be nice.
Well, that's good. Mrs. Washington.
Okay. I attended the Second Annual Stemming Program, which was held on Saturday, May the 3rd, at St. Mary's College of Maryland. And we know that STEMS means science, technology, engineering, and math. But what does the ING mean? And that is inspiring the next generation. It was a one-day stemming program at St. Mary's College for girls in grades 6 through 8 from the Tri-County area. The program included guest speakers, challenging hands-on experiments, fun hands-on workshops, and meeting with STEM role models and professionals. Why 6th through 8th grade girls? There are many reasons, but I'll just state a few. There is a severe shortage and under-representation of females in STEM professions. This gap starts early when girls are in middle school, when they get subtle messages that STEM is for males. But this doesn't happen in St. Mary's County Public School. And this is done with intentionality to let girls know that STEM is for them. Also, there is a glass ceiling in STEM careers, and sometimes parents unintentionally nudge their females to pursue other professions. And this was an opportunity to expose these middle school girls to the practical challenges and engage in STEM professions. It was also able to break down the stereotypes that females in STEM professions are nerdy, unsophisticated, boring, unattractive, and unappealing. The students also learned that the female STEM professionals are paid well to solve complex and critical problems. All students, whether male or female, need to be STEM literate. STEM is everywhere in our daily lives. I was on a panel called Wonder Women, and this panel consisted of women in STEM fields and supporters of the STEM Initiative. Ms. Leslie Taylor, who is the Director of Flight Test Engineering, Integrated Systems Evaluation, Experimentation, and Test Department for Naval Air System Command. Dr. Autumn Terry, the owner of All Kind Veterinary Hospital. Elise Davis, she leads a team of 100 engineers and technicians and manages a $20 million budget at a premier open-air range test facility. Then there was Lynn Driscoll, Global Vision Center Director for Lockheed Martin. And Dr. Michelle Melney, she's the Assistant Physics Professor at St. Mary's College of Maryland. This year event had 140 middle school girls, grades 6, 7, and 8, from St. Mary's, Calvert, and Charles County. The STEM event included 16 workshop activities covering various STEM areas. In addition, the students got a chance to meet inspiring STEM role models and spent socially interactive day learning from these fascinating women. About 55% of the students were from St. Mary's County. The original data analysis showed a 12% increase in students that declared a significant increase in interest of STEM education and careers. And 100% of the students declared an increase in knowledge of STEM and STEM careers, with 50% declaring a significant increase in knowledge and a 19% drop in students who initially declared no knowledge of STEM or STEM careers. Then on June the 12th, an appreciation ceremony was held at the Tides Restaurant to recognize the sponsors, the volunteers, speakers, and other contributors who contributed to this annual stemming event. Some of the partners were Patruxon Partnership, St. Mary's County Public Schools. And thanks goes to the event chair, Adrian Jordan, Cam Donahue, the Finder and Event Lead, Jennifer Consalvo, St. Mary's County Public Schools, Dr. Michael Materano, Superintendent of Schools, Mr. Gary Kessler, and the many sponsors who made the event a huge success. So based on what happened there, more females will be going into the STEM Academy, thanks to the efforts that are being done here in the Tri-County area and the support of our many partners in the community.
Thank you, Dr. Raspe.
Thank you, Mrs. Washington. Mrs. Allen.
It has been a season of graduations and promotions and recognitions of students moving from one level to another. And I took the time to go to the Lenartown Elementary School 5th grade promotion ceremony the day before schools finished. It was the day, I guess, school finished. And it was an exciting time. It was a lot of fun. And one of the things I enjoy most about it is that as I watch these young students as they go across the stage and they receive their recognition and their certificates, I can envision what they will look like as they cross the stage and receive their high school diploma. It has been an enjoyable time to have the opportunity to see so many of our students move throughout their careers of K-12. And congratulations to all, and I'm very pleased for everyone. It's been a wonderful, wonderful graduation season.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Allen. I had the pleasure of going on vacations past two weeks. Went to Hawaii with my wife and some friends, and I've never been to Hawaii. Some of you in this room, I'm sure, have been, but it was my first time. Took the cruise around the islands, and it's one beautiful place. When they say paradise, they're not kidding. It is paradise. I really enjoyed it. All the people were nice, and I did a certain amount of jaywalking, and I thought the cars would run me down, and people would blow the horn and all that. No, the cars just slowed down and stopped and waved to me as I crossed the street, and nobody blew the horn. I didn't hear any sirens. I saw one policeman. He was on a bicycle. Incredible. To me, it was, anyway. You know, I'm not used to that type of a situation. And I recommend it for anybody who's looking to go on a vacation. If you can go to Hawaii, I recommend you go and take the cruise, because it goes to all the islands, and you could spend a day or two days on some of the islands. I really enjoyed that. And of course, I've got some postcards. I told everybody I went to a Board of Education meeting while I was in Hawaii, and of course the picture on the front of it was three or four people surfboarding. Great way to have a board meeting. But any event, we had a great time. Glad we had the opportunity to go. And if I have the opportunity again, I probably would want to go again. I enjoyed it that much. Okay, this brings us to the superintendent's report. Dr. Materano?
Okay, Board members, good evening. Great to see you and wonderful audience this evening. Good to see everybody in the summer. And I have a relatively short report tonight because it is summer, but recognizing that June 12th is the last day of school, we had a tremendous last day of school. But as would be the case, this was the year defined by weather. I was attending the promotion ceremony at Piney Point, and by the time I got up, my cellphone was ringing and text was lit up that we were flooding in Lenartown and that roads were underwater. Fortunately, we got everybody home safely, but recognizing the fact of all the weather days that we had this year, that was very symbolic that we ended on the year with a weather kind of event. Also, as summer's in full swing, we have many events going on in the school system, lunch and learn programs, et cetera, and I will bring more information to the Board regarding that. I'm going to ask Tammy McCourt. Where is Tammy? Is she here? Tammy, I want you to go to the podium, if you would, as part of my report tonight. It's not a formal agenda item. Board members, we've spent lots of time talking about our budget this year, both FY14 and FY15. There's a lot of information in the news about the budgets in Calvert County, and St. Mary's County, and Charles County regarding educational issues. As you know, we've adopted a balanced budget for FY15, made the necessary cuts of what were needed to occur with revenues that we've had. But also still dangling out there is the considerations regarding FY14 and some of our shortfalls that we had in the healthcare arena and other various issues as well. So what I want to do is, this is our last board meeting of the fiscal year for this year, and we are diligently watching every day our dollars and our spending to make certain that we are closing out on a positive level. There has been conversations with our Board of County Commissioners, the possibility of needing an advancement of funding to balance out based upon the increases, et cetera. So I want Tammy to provide us with an update, considering this is your last board meeting of this fiscal year, and we do have a few more weeks left, but we want to give you the update from where we are now. So go ahead, Ms. McCourt.
Thank you, Dr. Materano. At this point, it looks like we will not need to go back to the county commissioners for any infusion funds for fiscal year 2014. We do have a few lingering items out there that are uncertain. Impact Aid, for example, we were hoping to receive $300,000. We've received notification that we'll be getting $16,000 towards an outstanding 2011 obligation. However, we're unaware at this point how much we'll be receiving towards our outstanding 2012 and 2013 obligations. So that number is still up in the air. We do have some good news, though, and that is the most recent health insurance bill for last week was $319,000. Our average weekly bill for the year has been $575,000. We still have one more week of bills for the health insurance. We've also been informed that as a result of converting back to the modified retrospective plan, that we will be given back $594,000, which was being held by our insurance provider for a health insurance hospital escrow, so they could pay all the hospital bills as they were coming in. So that's a positive for us as well. We're continuing to monitor our costs for the next week or so. However, we won't really know what our true costs are and our bottom line balance is until about mid-August, and that's when we've done all of our accruals in the year end, adjusting audit entries and such. But at this point, it certainly looks very positive for us.
So I want us to emphasize that point. Board members, would you start with that first statement again? State it again.
Looks very positive for us.
Looks very positive, in the sense that amidst all the noise as I talked about this year, the level of which we were able to conduct ourselves was very positive, with a very solid plan about identifying the problem, responding with a level of urgency to put freezes on our accounts, to maintain that level of savings internally, the use of our internal fund balances that we have. And again, this was a little larger than what we've had in the past regarding categoricals. But amidst all the noise in terms of the aspect of some of the conversations occurring in the community, we have been able to solve this problem on our own. We have been able to solve this problem on our own, and it looks as if we are going to zero out our accounts for FY14 in a very positive manner, and then may even have some monies that will be able to contribute to our fund balance. We'll have to see what that bottom line looks like. So again, as I say, we've been able to solve that on our own without the need for additional funding, but within the level of true transparency, we brought this information forward, and people reacted to that without having all the full information in terms of how we were solving that. And I'm very pleased, as I stated at a Board of County Commissioners meeting not too long ago, that it is a personal and private, personal professional approach for me, ambition to be able to solve this on our own, and we are doing that. To this Board, I want to convey that information to you. The next steps will be is that we will get to the bottom line as these bills continue to trickle in after they close out of the fiscal year. And then, as we stated at the Board of County Commissioners meeting, that we would reconcile this in the latter part of the year with a categorical transfer of things that needed to occur in any reconciliation at a later board meeting in either August or September.
That's right.
But where we are right now is in a very positive stead, so I want to commend this Board once again very publicly for being able to be able to answer any questions that were asked of you and respond at a level of which you were. I want to commend this Board for the level of conduct of which you were able to conduct yourself with a high level of respect and character throughout, and again, allowing staff, having the faith in our staff to be able to solve the problem internally. But again, in the level of full transparency, we exposed the problem. We responded when we knew, and then we acted accordingly. And then we have a plan moving forward in '15, as many of you have asked, to ensure that we are not going to repeat this problem again in '15. So I thank you, Ms. McCourt, once again for your diligence. Every staff member in this organization who's played a part in this, of watching every account and monitoring every position, and then where we are for recalibrating our budget for '15. And I want to assure individuals that schools, star boys and girls, those in the audience, on what date?
August 20th.
I didn't hear a lot of enthusiasm with that. Do want to let you know, August 20th, the buses will run, the meals will be served, the students will be taught, and our teachers will be in our classrooms, and we will maintain our class sizes, and we will address the issues and continue at this high level of performance. So I want to commend the Board for your leadership during this entire process, and we'll continue to provide you information. Board members, I'm sorry, sir.
Excuse me, if I may, Dr. Materano.
Yes, sir.
I think this Board wants to commend you, Mrs. McCourt and the staff, for doing a superb job to get this down to the zero point.
Right.
So we can close out F14.
Right, right.
In a proper fashion.
Right.
Without requesting any additional funding.
Yes.
From the county commissioners.
Thank you very much.
And that needs to be recorded for the record.
And I think it has been. I see reporters taking that down.
Yeah.
And we've got it on tape. So thank you for that.
Thank you, sir.
I do want to end on some sad news. My darkest days as superintendent are defined by the fact that we have 18,000 young people that we care about dearly. They're our precious children. We love them dearly. 18,000 of our children in our county. And my darkest days, as your darkest days are, is when we have information conveyed to us that one of our children has been hurt, or even more tragic loss of life. Unfortunately, Board members, the last two weeks, we've experienced the loss of life of two of our precious children. I want to take a moment of silence as I remember two students in our school system. Faith Lee, a 5th grade student at Dinerd Elementary School, and Sophia Turbush, who is a student at Evergreen Elementary School. Both of these young people passed in the last two weeks, and we've been providing support from the school system to their families, and support to the entire school system communities. The principals have done a tremendous job of leading their communities, assistant principals as well, of responding. And so, Dr. Raspe, and Board members, and members of our community here this evening, if you would join me in a moment of silence for the loss of the life of two of our very precious young people, Faith Lee and Sophia Turbush. Dr. Raspe, back to you.
Thank you, Dr. Materano. All right, let's move on into recognitions. First recognition this evening is the 2013-2014 GFWC Women's Club of St. Mary's County Youth Art Month Contest. Mrs. Dietz and Dr. Materano. Mrs. Dietz, how are you today?
I'm fine, thank you very much. It's good to see everybody. The GFWC Women's Club of St. Mary's County Arts Community Service Program is designed to enable members to create and contribute to art education and activities in their communities, as participation in the arts helps to raise public consciousness and connects members and clubs with their communities. Art plays an important part in the lives of GFWC members, as art helps to instill confidence, provides opportunities, and broadens club women's horizons. Moreover, members are the catalysts in their communities for encouraging and actively promoting all forms of art. To encourage GFWC members to further their own artistic expression and recognize their artistic achievements, GFWC sponsors a contest during the month of March to coincide with Youth Art Month. This year, GFWC Representative Sue Gibbs, who is the Chairperson for the Arts Committee, and I organized the contest for middle and high school students. The contest was divided into three classes of artwork. Class 1 for middle school, Class 2 for high school, and Class 3 for high school photography and computer art. The students that we are recognizing tonight received honorable mention and above for their entries into the contest. I'd also like to recognize that Ms. Jackie Morvine, who is a member of the GFWC Women's Club, is here tonight as well. If you could stand so that we can recognize you. Thank you. Also, I thought it would be a nice touch this year, as the students are recognized, for them to bring the piece of artwork up with them that they were recognized for winning with, so they will have that with them.
So with that, all the students who are recognized tonight, I want you to walk down the red carpet completely. Okay? It's your moment to shine, and then I want you to walk your artwork in front of the Board members so they can see it and then join over here. Got that? And enjoy the red carpet.
In recognition for winning honorable mention in Class 1 in the GFWC's Youth Art Month Contest, Maya Stone.
Beautiful.
Oh, that's beautiful.
Yeah, that's beautiful.
You look beautiful, too.
How long did it take you to do that?
Oh, it only took a couple hours.
A couple hours?
Yes.
Beautiful. And you did that with pencils?
Yes.
Beautiful.
In recognition for winning third place in Class 1 in the GFWC Women's Youth Art Month Contest, Lauren Hicks.
Thank you.
How long did it take you to do that?
A day.
A day?
Nice.
It's cool.
Beautiful.
What inspired you?
Okay.
Cool.
In recognition for winning second place in Class 1, Stephanie Lewis.
Fashionable.
My pants dance.
Cool.
You go to bed, so.
In recognition for winning first place and at the district level, an honorable mention in Class 1, Jane Bailey.
Hello. I am not...
How long did it take you to do that?
Um, I think it was around...
Wow, you're fast.
Wow, you did fast work.
That's great.
Two hours, my gosh.
She's good.
In recognition for winning third place and at the district level, an honorable mention in Class 2, Tiara Harris.
I like how she's doing.
Oh, that's beautiful.
Yeah, that is.
Eyes are awesome. How long did it take you to do that?
Couple hours.
Couple hours? Couple of days.
You did a great job.
Incredible.
Beautiful.
In recognition for winning first place in Class 2, Brittany Simpson.
Wow. Now, that's incredible.
Wow.
Yeah.
That is very imaginative.
Great artist.
In recognition for winning third place and at the district level, an honorable mention in Class 3, Deborah Jane Coppins.
Yeah.
Oh.
How long did it take you to do that?
That's a photo.
Look at the picture.
Perspective with the rocks.
Right.
Just like I can walk with.
How cool. I love the photography.
And in recognition for winning second place in Class 3, Caitlin Fippen.
Oh, so sweet.
Is that your dog?
Oh.
What kind of dog is that?
Well, first of all, I want to just give them all a thunderous round of applause. Fantastic. Board members, we often, I can't see all the board members. I know you're back there. One of the things we talk about in our educational system that we're so proud of is the fact of stimulating creativity, the creative mind, and the importance of the arts in our schools. And this is just a fine display of some very talented individuals with high gifted abilities. We're so proud of you. Continue your dreams. Continue your art. Continue what you're doing, because there's such fantastic pieces on display here. We thank you as well for your contribution and the work that you've done with us, and a great partnership. And again, give them another round of applause, if you would. So now I have the challenging task. We're going to try to get a picture with everybody, so be patient with me, so I can get a picture and so we can memorialize this opportunity. Board members, if you would join me. I'm Mary Anderson from Malkey, and I'm Ed Kirk. So come on up, if you would. Come on up, come on up, come on up. with over the past several years. She even modified her work schedule so that she could be with the kids providing one-on-one service throughout the day. Next is Ms. Laura Lang from Green Holly Elementary School.[601.54][601.54][applause] Ms. Lang can often be seen at the Green Holly Elementary School Media Center assisting with shelving, cataloging, organizing book fairs. She's been a coach for Destination Imagination and donated countless hours to help kids research and problem solve. Next is Jason Mandeville from Mechanicsville Elementary School.[634.54][634.54][applause] Mr. Mandeville has helped develop and sustain an after-school science program that meets twice a month. Through his enthusiasm for science, amazing experiments, and dedication to the Mechanicsville Elementary School Parent Teacher Organization, the school has made better for children. And finally, our finalist for St. Mary's County, Ms. Heather Foster from Leannertown Elementary School.[658.85][658.85][applause] Ms. Foster is best known for her community outreach program, which has helped the lives of over sixteen families in need for the Leannertown Elementary School community. Thank you very much.
I'm not finished yet. So, board members, we are so proud of these volunteers. Ladies and gentlemen, give them a round of applause if you would.[688.13][688.13][applause] Every year, we chronicle for you the importance of our parent volunteers, our community volunteers, our overall volunteers within our community, and the contribution that you make for our children is just unbelievable for us. If we chronicle all of those hours and we think about it in terms of that aspect of it, you add an incredible piece for our performance of our young people, for the nurturing and the caring of our young people. It goes without question that St. Mary's County is one of the highest-performing school systems in the nation, and for that, we're very proud. But it takes that truly, using that statement over and over, it truly takes a village for everybody to make contributions for our young people. And I can't say that enough. I know it's an overused statement, but everybody contributing from the benefit of our children, and children really benefit from the aspect of your contributions. So we thank you from the bottom of our hearts. We thank you on behalf of our children. We thank you for your enthusiasm. It was great seeing you in church and being introduced to you the other day with that great enthusiasm after church. Another friend of ours who introduced you to me there, and I'm absolutely delighted with all of your work. Give them a round of applause again if you would.[755.73][755.73][applause] And continue, continue to work for us, just continue to volunteer, continue to make contributions to our young people. We thank you for that. Board members, if you'd join me again for a picture, we appreciate it.
Okay, the next recognition, Destination Imagination, Dr. Moore and Dr. Mariano.
Thank you very much. Well, good evening. Destination Imagination, or DI, is an international creative problem-solving program in which students work together as part of a team to develop a solution to one of six different challenges, which they perform in front of appraisers at tournaments. DI is being implemented as part of our STEM for All initiative, and students develop skills while solving challenges through unique, hands-on experiences in the sciences, technology, mechanics, engineering, theater, improvisation, goal-setting, time and budget management, team-building, and leadership. Most critically through this program, teams exercise their creative problem-solving and teamwork skills. While implemented at a few schools, DI began in St. Mary's County Public Schools in a larger effort in 2008, and has expanded exponentially since then to become one of our largest competitive programs for students. I want to also thank, and Dr. Laura Carpenter, if you could please stand, who is our school system coordinator for the program, and also serves as one of the regional directors at the state level. So please, let's give her a round of applause.[851.56][851.56][applause] This year, over 250 students on thirty teams from thirteen schools in St. Mary's County Public Schools participated in Destination Imagination. In March, these teams participated in a regional tournament at South River High School in Annapolis, and this competition represented the culmination of the work they have done since September in preparing their challenge. Thirteen of those teams from seven schools advanced to the state tournament held in April. Sixty-six teams from the region then competed for the opportunity to advance to the global finals in May. Two St. Mary's County Public Schools advanced to the global finals held May 21st through 24th in Knoxville, Tennessee. Tonight, we recognize those two teams. The Chesapeake Power of Five and the Chesapeake Superstar Angels from the Chesapeake Public Charter School were among the 1,412 teams who participated in the global finals. Maryland had fifty-three teams, and the tournament drew national attention with stories on CNN's headline news. One of our own students, Kaitlin Kovach, was chosen to be one of only eight student reporters at the tournament. So we'll recognize her in a moment as well. St. Mary's County Public Schools is very proud of all of its teams, and we are pleased to recognize the students from these two teams who participated in the Destination Imagination Global Finals in Tennessee. Both teams then placed in the top twenty percent of over a hundred teams who participated in their respective categories. In addition to the team members, I also want to applaud Ms. Angela Funia, the Chesapeake Charter School Director, and Ms. Jackie Snyder, the school's DI coordinator. Ms. Funia, would you join us up here as we recognize the students?[966.12][966.12][applause] And Dr. Carpenter, would you also come up to join us in recognizing the students as well? So I'd like to recognize the following students that are here, and I'll also call the names of the students who are not present, too, so they can be recognized in their absence. So first, we have Jolie Ganzel from the Power of Five.[995.31][995.31][applause] Morgan Hunt.[1001.31][1001.31][applause] Kaitlin Kovach.[1003.31][1003.31][applause] And one of their managers is here as well, Lynn Hunt.[1013.81][1013.81][applause] The other members of that team who are not able to join us this afternoon are one of the team managers, Mary Beth Ganzel, Courtney Rosenstadt, and Alani Pronzo. So let's give them a round of applause.[1030.13][1030.13][applause] Also, please join us in walking the red carpet from the Superstar Angels, Sarah Angay.[1038.83][1038.83][applause] Reagan Angle.[1040.83][1040.83][applause] Annalise Hess.[1042.83][1042.83][applause] Katie McHugh.[1044.83][1044.83][applause] Did Emily Nelson make it in? Okay, we'll recognize her in her absence. Abigail Venecco.[1049.83][1049.83][applause]
You're going to get every corner of that red carpet. I wonder, are you excited?
And one of their team managers, Ms. Leslie Hess.[1053.83][1053.83][applause] We also want to recognize again the students from this team who were unable to make it here this evening, Jasmine Cooper and Emily Nelson, as well as their other team manager, Rebecca Venecco.[1062.75][1062.75][applause]
Well, this is wonderful. Are you guys excited? I can tell. I can see why you did such a great job, because you have a great level of enthusiasm. I'm very pleased. Where's the student reporter? Come on, come on over here. I think there's a level of curiosity. I want to put you on the spot. You can handle this, can't you? Or you're going to now.[1075.17][1075.17][laughter] So, tell me, what is the exact title?
Um, a Destination Imagination Student Reporter.
Destination Imagination Student Reporter. And tell me what a Destination Imagination Student Reporter is and does.
Um, well, we had to audition online to be a student reporter. Then, once you were selected, you participated, we participated in the opening ceremony for global finals, the closing ceremony, and there was DITB, which, yeah, DITB. So, we did some interviews and stuff there.
Okay, so you actually did interviews and did some reporting as well.
Mm-hmm.
That's a big honor, to be able to do that, and to all of you. Give her a round of applause.[1088.17][1088.17][applause] Thank you for being able to put her on the spot, because that's what great reporters do. We just give you a little bit of, you know, pressure there, and you handled it very well. So you can go ahead back over there. To all of our students, I want you to follow me, and I want you to look at this. This is the Essential Survival Skills for the Twenty-First Century Learned. This is a book that I use with all of our staff members, with our teachers. It's called The Global Achievement Gap, and it's called Skills That We Want You To Have To Be Able To Be Very, Very Successful In The Twenty-First Century. So look at some of the skills that we're talking about. Critical thinking and problem solving. Is that a major component of DI? Absolutely. So, board members, when we talk about all the connected entities of our programs that we put in place, it's all designed to achieve our academic goals for our young people. So the biggest thing right now, as I talk locally and at state and across the nation in various groups, I'm always talking about preparing young people for the Twenty-First Century, preparing young people for college and careers, and because we're in an information era where there's lots of information coming, many of you are online, you're on the Internet, you have computers, there's lots of information for you. But the aspect is, and lots of problems that need to be solved, we need to make sure that your mind is being developed in a way where you're critical thinkers and able to solve problems by taking all those skills together, not to mention a variety of other very important information. And another component is curiosity and imagination. Is that a major part of it? By all means. So when we had our students up here earlier, the individuals who are up here with the very artistic students, some of them are still in the audience, I said to them, "I want to make sure that you're continuing to stimulate the creative mind," because that aspect of creation, creative minds, innovation, is extremely important to us now and to our future as a county and as a nation in terms of where we're going to be. Because right now, think about this, you're smart young people. There are problems that have yet to be identified, follow what I'm saying? There are problems out there that have yet to be identified that are going to need your minds to be able to solve. Does that make sense to you? So through the development, through the educational process, we hope that you're going to be equipped with the skills that I'm talking about here through DI, that are going to be able to be contributors to society to solve those problems that we're going to need. So I am so proud of you. I'm so proud of this program, proud of all of you, for the work that you've done. Dr. Moore, outstanding job. You're so dedicated to the program. And on behalf of the school system, the Board of Education, please give them a thunderous round of applause.[1239.08][1239.08][applause] So now I've got to be very creative, and I'm not sure how I'm going to do this, but we're going to work it through. Want to get a picture of all of you? So...
Okay, the board, we'll take a five-minute break. There's no public hearing this evening. Are there any public comments?
No public comments.
No public comments. All right, thank you. Consent agenda, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move approval of the consent agenda as presented.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Everyone in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? The ayes have it. Action item, Chesapeake Public Charter School renewal. Mrs. Hall and Mrs. Funia.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I have Mrs. Funia here with me, representing the Chesapeake Public Charter School, and what we would like to request for your approval is for you to extend the existing contract, because we have not yet finished the negotiation process. We hope to have it wrapped up in the next month or so, but we would like a little more time to flesh out all the details. So we are asking for your approval to extend the existing contract.
Questions, comments? Dr. Mariano, you want to?
This is the right direction in which we need to move. We need a little bit more time, and we want to extend this, and this is where we need to be right now with their overall contract. The charter school's in great shape, and we want to keep that moving, but we still have some work that needs to be done.
Okay. Mrs. Allen, comments, questions?
No, it's, we're not ready to move forward, so, thank you.
Okay. Mrs. Washington?
Did you say how long? You want an extension for how long?
We think we'll be, have concluded the negotiation process in the next month or so, but I think Mr. Emili has, I think we can just extend it and then bring it back as when we're ready.
Well, that's right. There's, there's no reason why you can't extend the current contract as-is, maintaining the status quo as-is, without, you know, going through the process of entering into a new contract. We're not ready to enter into a new contract.
I understand that. I'm saying we want to extend the present contract by thirty days?
Ninety days.
Ninety days, what?
I don't know.
You know, I understand what they're asking for.
Yeah, I don't know the specific duration that they've asked.
I believe that we, Mrs. Washington, I believe that we will be finished in about a month, but, Ms. Funia, do you have a feeling on that?
I, you know, I'd rather not tie our hands.
Right. Let's...
The flexibility, I, I think if we, if we just move that to the, approve the extension of the charter...
And one of their team managers, Ms. Leslie Hess. We also want to recognize again the students from this team who were unable to make it here this evening, Jasmine Cooper and Emily Nelson, as well as their other team manager, Rebecca Venecco.
Well, this is wonderful. Are you guys excited? I can tell, I can see why you did so, such a great job because you have a great level of enthusiasm. I'm very pleased. Where's the student reporter? Come on, come on over here. I think there's a level of curiosity. I want to put you on the spot. You can handle this, can't you? Or you're going to now. So, tell me, what is the exact title?
Um, a Destination Imagination Student Reporter.
Destination Imagination Student Reporter. And tell me what a Destination Imagination Student Reporter is and does.
Um, well, we had to audition online to be a student reporter. Then, once you were selected, you participated, we participated in the opening ceremony for global finals, the closing ceremony, and there was DITB, which, yeah, DITB. So, we did some interviews and stuff there.
Okay, so you actually did interviews and did some recording as well. That's a big honor, to be able to do that. And to all of you, give her a round of applause. Thank you for being able to put her on the spot because that's what great reporters do. We just give you a little bit of, you know, pressure there, and you handled it very well. So you can go ahead back over there. To all of our students, I want you to follow me and I want you to look at this. This is the Essential Survival Skills for the Twenty-First Century Learned. This is a book that I use with all of our staff members, with our teachers. It's called The Global Achievement Gap, and it's called Skills That We Want You To Have To Be Able To Be, Able To Be Very, Very Successful In The Twenty-First Century. So look at some of the skills that we're talking about. Critical thinking and problem solving. Is that a major component of DI? Absolutely. So, board members, when we talk about all the connected entities of our programs that we put in place, it's all designed to achieve our academic goals for our young people. So the biggest thing right now, as I talk locally and at state and across the nation in various groups, I'm always talking about preparing young people for the Twenty-First Century, preparing young people for college and careers. And because we're in an information era where there's lots of information coming, many of you are online, you're on the internet, you have computers, there's lots of information for you. But the aspect is, and lots of problems need to be solved, we need to make sure that your mind is being developed in a way where you're critical thinkers and able to solve problems by taking all those skills together. Not to mention a variety of other very important information. And another component is curiosity and imagination. Is that a major part of it? By all means. So when we had our students up here earlier, the individuals who are up here with the very artistic students, some of them are still in the audience, I said to them, I want to make sure that you're continuing to stimulate the creative mind. Because that aspect of creation, creative minds, innovation is extremely important to us now and to our future as a county and as a nation in terms of where we're going to be. Because right now, think about this, you're smart young people. There are problems that have yet to be identified, follow what I'm saying? That are problems out there that have yet to be identified that are going to need your minds to be able to solve. Does that make sense to you? So through the development, through the educational process, we hope that you're going to be equipped with the skills that I'm talking about here through DI that are going to be able to be contributors to society to solve those problems that we're going to need. So I am so proud of you. I'm so proud of this program, proud of all of you for the work that you've done. Dr. Mar, outstanding job, you're so dedicated to the program. And on behalf of the school system, the Board of Education, please give them a thunderous round of applause. So now I've got to be very creative, and I'm not sure how I'm going to do this, but we're going to work it through. Want to get a picture of all of you, so...
Okay, the board, we'll take a five-minute break. Very, there's no public hearing this evening. Are there any public comments?
No public comments.
No public comments, all right, thank you. Consent agenda, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move approval of the consent agenda as presented.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Everyone in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? The ayes have it. Action item, Chesapeake Public Charter School renewal. Mrs. Hall and Mrs. Funia.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I have Mrs. Funia here with me, representing the Chesapeake Public Charter School. And what we would like to request for your approval is for you to extend the existing contract because we have not yet finished the negotiation process. We hope to have it wrapped up in the next month or so, but we would like a little more time to flesh out all the details. So we are asking for your approval to extend the existing contract.
Questions, comments? Dr. Marano, you want to?
This is the right direction which we need to move. We need a little bit more time, and we want to extend this, and this is where we need to be right now with their overall contract. The charter school's in great shape, and we want to keep that moving, but we still have some work that needs to be done.
Okay. Mrs. Allen, comments, questions?
No, it's, we're not ready to move forward, so, thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Washington.
Did you say how long? You want an extension for how long?
We think we'll, we'll be, have concluded the negotiation process in the next month or so. But I think Mr. Omeley has, I think we can just extend it and then bring it back as, when we're ready.
Well, that's right. There's, there's no reason why you can't extend the current contract as-is, maintaining the status quo as-is, without, you know, going through the process of entering into a new contract. We're not ready to enter into a new contract.
I understand that. I'm saying we want to extend the present contract by thirty days?
Ninety days.
Ninety days, what?
I don't know.
That's, you know, I understand what they're asking for.
Yeah, I don't know the specific duration that they've asked.
I believe that we, Mrs. Washington, I believe that we will be finished in about a month, but, Ms. Funia, do you have a feeling on that?
You know, I'd rather not tie our hands.
Right, let's...
The flexibility, I, I think if we, if we just move that to the, approve the extension of the charter when we get to this point, approve the extension of the charter until such time as a new agreement has been signed. Is that...
Yes.
Okay.
That way we're, we're not rushing, and it, I think, gives us the flexibility that I think we all need.
Okay, thank you.
So that meets your legal approval?
That's fine.
Because it expires when?
It expires June 3rd.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that you had a certain amount of time instead of, you know, in perpetuity or something, you know?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Any other questions?
No.
Matthews?
No, they answered mine.
Okay. Mr. Omeley's here, he's the attorney. This is how we proceed, his recommendation. Dr. Marano?
No, I mean, this has to be done. We still have some work to be, that needs to be done. I appreciate the comment from Mrs. Washington in terms of the time. We just need to have the parameters to be able to get it done right without having the pressures of having to rush. I'm convinced that we can have it done the next thirty to sixty days. But again, I don't want to put that limitation and have to come back for the board and seek another extension as well. So by virtue of how Mrs. Allen has suggested, in concurrence with the rest of the board members, that we give the extension, get this completely vetted and get it correct so that we can get the approval that needs to occur. That's where we are with this.
Okay. There's no need to get any specific...
No, not at this point, no.
Okay. Okay, board members, we need a motion.
I move that the Board of Education extend the charter agreement for the Chesapeake Public Charter School until such time as a new agreement has been struck.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Signed.
Everyone in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Okay, the ayes have it.
Thank you.
Mrs. Hall and Mrs. Funia.
We'll be back shortly.
Oh, okay.
Good, thank you.
There are no information items this evening. The next future board meeting will be on Wednesday, July 9th, 2014, at 9:00 a.m. And board members, we need a motion to re-enter into executive session so we can continue with the agenda.
I move the Board of Education resume the earlier executive session immediately following this meeting.
All right, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Anyone in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Make the ayes have it. The Board of Education will enter into executive session. This general meeting has adjourned.